Lord, thank you for this day and for the beautiful weather outside as well. Lord, we ask of you that you help guide us in our decisions, especially with the college, and please be used well. And I pray.
The presence of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
About the agenda? Motion?
I'd like to approve the agenda for this.
Second. We'll call it, I'll win the favor. Wait, men, men's the last meeting?
I'll say for a minute.
I'll second for motion.
Motion second, I'll win the favor.
Aye.
Need a motion on that?
Yeah, session motion somewhere. You got for none, thank you.
You sit for. Go, just turn the page.
Oh, here. I thought I was going on.
Yeah, add price for the minute. After.
Eric, I'm glad we reorganized.
We only do this once every two years, but, you know.
I'm gonna go to my homework part. General call for nominations for the temporary secretary of the reorganizing board.
I'm nominated Dr. Weston Payne as temporary chairman and E. Gilbeck as temporary secretary of the board of trustees for Three Rivers Community College.
Second motion? You get a second. I'll hold the paper.
All right, well first, as temporary chair, I would like to recognize trustee Williams for his service as chairperson of the board, and we have a little momentum of that service.
For today. All right, I guess we get.
We have a new.
In accordance with public school laws of Missouri, the board trustee shall organize by the election of the chairman, vice chairman, and secretary of the president. At the April fifteenth, nineteen ninety-two meeting, trustee Bright and trustee Nubell seconded that the chairman's position be on one-year rotation and that ascension of officers be as followed as shown on page eight of the board book. And the rotation of those officers are shown on the following page in that order. So I would call for a motion to approve the slate as presented.
My good motion.
And a second. I'll say it. All in favor? Aye. At this time, the newly elected officers will rotate to their elected seat, so if you will, just pop up your name tag.
Just the top right hand. You're right here. You're, you're in the, you're on the right inside. Well, let me show.
Back in the seat, one point.
Motion.
All right, so we are back to the consideration of the college financial report. Ms. Uven?
Starting on page ten of the board books. This is last year as of February the twenty-eighth compared to this year at February twenty-eighth. You can see on our revenue side, on this first page, we're actually a little bit ahead last year compared to last year with the tuition fees, so that's indicative of that little bit of an increase in enrollment that we see in spring. So that's good to see. Other categories are very comparable, a little bit more in state appropriations this year and catching up on property taxes. On the next page, on page eleven, looking at expenses, very comparable to what you've seen in previous months. And then finally on page twelve, looking at revenue, these money expenses were just slightly behind where we were the same time last year, but also note that last year's number also included some one-time, two-point-three million one-time from the CARES fund in that year, so being that close to it, we're only about three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand below last year, so when you factor in that two-point-three million, we're doing well. Looking then on page fifteen, these are our preliminary March numbers, budget versus actuals, so that's seventy-five percent of course we are on the top half of the pages we're looking at revenue, you can see we're closing in on our budget projections and on a number of our categories, we're just missing just a little bit on tuition and fees, but we still have a part of summer to book that, to make up that difference, so expect that to be, to be met. Other categories, very comparable, government appropriations, of course, comes along each month as we get our state, state aid and we've actually exceeded budget in non-operating revenue largely because of property taxes. On the bottom half of the page, looking at expenses, sort of using that seventy-five percent as, as a goal, just to make sure categories are at or below seventy-five percent, so we can be very conservative there, exception being scholarships, which are paid out semesterally, so they don't quite fit that pattern. Following that in on page seventeen, on our capital budget, we've got several projects going on there, a number of them having been completed, we've got some fleet vehicles and then some repairs on the siphon roof and a number of improvements here on the college campus or the Poplar Bluff campus, the largest of which, of course, is our importance of the HBAC system that is being funded through the CARES grant. Following that in, looking on page twenty, at our pie graph or cash position, very typical for this point in fiscal year, very comparable to what you've seen in, in early months. No changes to certificates of deposits and no bids to report this month. No questions?
If there are no questions, anyone have a motion to approve the project for the financial board?
I'll make that motion.
Dr. Eric raises the motion, Dr. Richardson the second. All in favor? Aye. And opposed? We've gone, thank you, so president's support.
Thank you, Mrs. Carolyn. I will start with, I have a new hairdo. So the catalyst for this is we were up four-point-eight percent, and back when we were down twelve-and-a-half percent, I looked at some people and said, you know, if we were flat, I'd do a little dance. And they said, well, what if we're up? And I said, well, if we were up, I'll let someone chase my head. And I felt I was relatively safe, so a few things to note, I really didn't give that much out. And I lost in one, all at the same fell swoop, because in the end, we are up from enrollment, college-wide effort on that. What you see there is Ms. Kathy Richardson, who did make me feel completely in great hands when I handed her the shears, and she said, well, oh my God, I've never used anything like this. Well, okay, so that's done.
It's a good look.
I, I joined the club. I just get a refund. Some haircut are better than ours. So I would ask Mr. Mark Sanders to come forward and talk to us about the spelling bee.
Got some visual aids to share. Happy to say that we don't actually have that many copies of our agenda, so if you guys just want to pass that around, we had wonderful attendance this year and a lot of participants. Again, I'm Mark Sanders, professor of philosophy and coordinator for the Three Rivers College, Southeast Missouri Regional Spelling Bee, it's the only time that we'll use the full title. Three Rivers College has been the official sponsor for the Scripps National Spelling Bee since two thousand and ten. Now serving nineteen counties in Southeast Missouri, Three Rivers annually sends its regional champion to represent the college and the area at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, D.C. Thanks to the support from the college's annual budget and sponsorship from area businesses and organizations, we provide an all-expenses-paid trip to the national competition for our bee champion and his or her family. On Saturday, March twenty-fifth of this year, thirty-three students from twenty-three schools in five counties participated in our regional bee. The contestants ranged in age from fourth grade to eighth grade. Our first place winner was Colby Arms, a sixth grader from Saint Joseph Catholic School in Farmington. His winning word was acuity, which means sharpness of vision. Colby will compete at the National Spelling Bee on Memorial Day week in Washington, D.C., and he is the younger brother of Brayton Arms, who won the Three Rivers Bee three times previously, so that family is well familiar with the competition. Coming in second place was Jenna Ramsey, an eighth-grade student from John Evans Middle School in Petoskey. This was Jenna's first time participating in the competition, unfortunately because she is in eighth grade, she will graduate out, so she won't be able to make a return trip. But one student who does have the potential to do that was our third place winner, Owen Albright, and he's a fourth grader from Poplar Bluff Middle School. And Owen placed in the top three in his first time at the regional competition, and he was pretty amazing, because he was about a foot shorter than everyone else, and just, you can see from the picture here, and just spelling words with ease, so looking forward to seeing Owen again. Most of our local sponsors are longtime supporters who've been a part of this effort for many years. They include Armco Rentals, Southern Bank, Gambling Lumber, Kennedy Kennedy Robbins and Yarborough Wall Firm, Poplar Bluff Rubbery Club, Eastside Discount Pharmacy, Life Only Dentistry, and Instacrant. We are grateful to all of these sponsors, as well as the continued financial facilities and logistical support of everyone here at Three Rivers College. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
What's the proper spelling of acuity?
A-C-U-I-T-Y.
I'm sorry, you're supposed to repeat the word.
That's actually not a rule. It's just a suggestion.
I love going on a young show, and then we.
Yeah, just kind of look like that.
That's a look. That's fabulous, I think it's cool.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sanders, for the presentation today, and thank you for your long-serving and continued sponsorship of this program. It means a lot to our community and to those kids.
Thank you very much.
Nice talking to you. Now I'm going to ask that Mr. Alex Jamison come up and to speak about the college transfer fair and the job and career fair.
Not passed, I'll send Gail over.
Oh, well, Gail will come up and talk about the college transfer. You can both do it.
I'm afraid she's going to be able to better instruct you how the college transfer fair will be, but I would be happy to discuss the career fair.
They've kind of split those two things into two, so I do the transfer fair, and we did that on, on March twenty-eighth, and we did that in the, we did that in the classroom lobby. It just seems like it's been a really good place to get students to come through. We had about thirty students come, and we had eighteen universities represented, including our three partner universities, Southeast Missouri State, Hamerlegrange, and Central Methodist. We had SIU, ASU, Missouri State, Mizzou, so we had, you know, a great variety of transfer opportunities for our students to talk to them. So we hold transfer fairs in every spring and every fall.
Hi. Alex Jamison, academic advisor for career services, excuse me if I can speak, Department of Labor. We have, as of this year, brought back our career fair, which we have had several years prior, but COVID decided to put a squash to that, and we have brought that back onto our campus. We are partnered with the CRC, Community Resource Council. This took place April thirteenth, last Thursday, from ten a.m. to two p.m. in the libel family sports, sports complex in the concourse. So we did not use Jim Floyd, we used the concourse, and we received very, very positive feedback from our employers for that format. They really liked that the applicants had passed by every table in order to get around all the way to all the other tables. They really liked that ability to reach out and gig. We have a total of sixty-one vendors registered for our career fair, fifty-seven of which did make an appearance and one of which did not register and made an appearance anyway. So this is the highest number of vendors employed we have seen for a career fair, so this is a very positive number as far as employers are concerned, and we're very happy with that. We ran out of tables, so we had to get some very questionable-looking tables and get some not-so-questionable-looking table cloths to fix that problem. So more tables next year, it's on my agenda. As for foot traffic, we saw a hundred-and-eighty confirmed registered participants in the career fair this year. That is the highest number that the CRC has seen in recent years, last year being a hundred-and-twenty-seven at the Black River Coliseum. It received much less traffic, and we received far more applicants, although I have not got that official number from the CRC at this time. I am told that there were actually far more applicants than last year as well, so confirmed employment opportunities for those hundred-and-eighty registered people. So overall, a considerate success. I still have yet higher expectations, and we're going to step back and take a in-depth look at our advertising methods to see if we can get even more participants come next year. But other than that, we consider it a success and a great benefit to our community. Thank you.
The mix of students and people from the community?
Yes, we had a, a good mix. I wish we could have seen some more of our own students there, but we did see a lot of students from the community, Bolden actually brought their combust and showed up with twenty-seven of their students to participate, and then we saw a good portion of the actual community coming to participate as well.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any other question?
Thank you, Mr. Jamison.
You're welcome.
And now I'm going to ask that the whites come forward, Professor Cindy and Buddy White, and they'll be talking about two topics, starting with the musical music section.
Yes, this is, we think, our twenty-sixth year of hosting the district music festival, and we always have a prelim for the concert bands in the area, so to give them an opportunity to perform on a stage, and we hire a band master to come in and work the bands. They get the opportunity to play on our stage, the one that they'll be just on two weeks later. And acoustics are a big thing with bands, and many of the schools, it's the first time that they've ever performed on a stage. And since COVID, I think Poplar Bluff last year only had one class of students that had ever been to the festival, and this year, they have three classes, so things are moving in the right direction. At our prelim festival, we had two-hundred-and-thirty band students out of five bands, and they returned two weeks later, on March third. For our state-level district music festival, this is a photo of one of the choirs performing.
I want to comment on the photo. This is a particularly interesting photo. This is Bloomfield High School Choir. The current choir director is Hayden Hall. He is a graduate of Three Rivers College, general education degree, he was in our, in our choirs, and then he came back and he got an electrical certificate. His dream job was always to go back and become the choir director at his alma mater, Bloomfield High School. He's doing that without a four-year degree. Lots of jobs in music have come open, and he got called and got the job, and this is Hayden's choir. He is there while he is finishing a degree through Central Methodist University, so that he can be credentialed to be the choir director, and he is literally living his dream. This is his dream job that suddenly got dropped in his lap, and he thought, like many others, he was making a career path move into electrician, and suddenly this dropped in his lap, and he was like, no, that's my dream, I'm, I'm going for it. So that, that young man is doing great things, they did really well. So I, I think that's a great interest story for us. We actually have three students doing that right now, that are teaching choir and completing degrees. Hayden in Bloomfield, Mason German at Clearwater, and.
Shelby in the vault.
Shelby's finished with her degree, and Molden is one of ours, and helped Matthew Pickard at Richland. So we actually have three of them out there right now finishing degrees while they're on provisional certifications, so that says a lot for us.
Cindy has students encouraging their students.
That was an aside.
This, this one, you have permission. Like, I believe. This is one of fifteen choirs, we have two-hundred-and-ninety-six choir students on the thirty, we have two-hundred-and-ninety band students for eight bands. All of our music students help as runners and monitors. They're adjudicated, and the judges give their comments on recorders, which we take the cards, download them to the computer after each performance, and then send them to the various school districts later on. The total for the, for March for us is one-thousand-and-eighty-four students. I wanted to mention our SRO officer, Aaron Ahoi. When one of our visiting directors passed out, this is a stressful time for the kids and their directors, and it was serious enough that Aaron went to give our AED in the building, which is routinely checked, and I check it all the time too. The director did indeed, but we were worried, and called for an ambulance, he was taken to the emergency room, and recovered and is doing fine, but it's really great to have help when you have a thousand people in your building and someone's in trouble. But that's not the first time this happened to us in twenty-six years, so we were on it. We had to get the calm people in the room. And on the thirty-first, this had never happened before, that was one of our severe weather days, and as we were proceeding with the second day of our festival, our area superintendent started canceling classes and wanting to recall the students that were here on campus. So we rushed things and made sure we worked through the lunch period for the judges to get the, the student solos accomplished, because we only had till Tuesday to send the results in.
It's a state qualifier, so they didn't do it that day, they didn't do it.
So we heard you about everyone finished and home safely, and we were lucky that day, some areas not quite so lucky with the, with the weather. But it's a great opportunity to bring people on campus to see our really excellent facilities and to play in one of the best up-staged theaters in the state, maybe the area. We've had compliments from groups around the world playing here. So it's great for us to see the, the schools. I introduce every band in place, and we introduce every choir in the scene. So I think we're the hub of the area, exactly what we should and.
Student showcase. I'll leave this out here, if you want to pass them around. We had our, our annual spring showcase, we have one in the fall, one in the spring. These are all students that are studying privately or singing in one of our groups. So we had a mix of vocal and instrumentalists on the stage that night. We are a very young group. They're about a third of the people are, have been in the choir before. So I think we're about eighteen on that program. Only five of those have been in the choirs and on the stage before, so we're a very young group, which means next year we should be a, a, an older group with some more experience. We have a variety of music on that program. You can see we started with Beatles tunes, the shirts they're wearing, we ordered iron-on logos, and they actually stood in the choir with an iron, their logos on their own shirts.
Our.
So we teach them life skills as well, and variety of music, starting with the Beatles song and ending with the Shakira, Try Everything. You'll get to see those same folks on the stage if you come to Pajama Game next week, it's the same group of students, and you'll get to see and hear them at commencement, because we usually try out our commencement song at this, at this performance, so they've gotten one run-through on the stage. So I think you'll really enjoy our Try Everything song, which is probably somehow some of our students have felt as they've gone through college, I will try everything, and I will little, will succeed, so, which, we have a good positive attitude going on in the music department. Our students are really bonded, it's nice. I think we missed that three or four years ago, and so we're back to, to bonding, and we walked to the Liberal Arts Week singing songs across campus on Monday, so that looks way odd, so we're, I think we're clicking along nicely.
So since you have three or four that are band directing, band teaching, while they're finishing up to get certified, out of curiosity, if we started in Carter Ripley County and went all the way to the river, just kind of in a straight line and down the boot hill, how many of the band directors aren't your product?
I think we, oh, I mean, aren't my program? I don't know. They do call me on my cell phone now, and I'm quite all right with that.
No, I mean, you're.
How many are ours? We have at least six that are at Central Methodist University, two plus two, that are teaching. Now, two of those are kind of out of the area, one's in Jefferson City, one is in Carthage, Missouri, but the rest of those are all in this area, plus these three that are now doing both at the same time.
And in those cases, the superintendent's called us to ask us for suggestions, and well as a member, yes.
So we, and we know that feeds back to us. The more of our graduates that are in the area teaching, the, the more they, they encourage their, their own students to go in this direction, so it's.
And that's really the point I was trying to make, is the vast majority of music teachers in Southeast Missouri are former students of Cindy and Buddy White.
We have a lot, a lot of connections.
And without the program that they run, we would not have the music programs that our K-12 systems enjoy.
And so we not have music at all.
Right.
Because they were close to canceling several of these area programs, so we were happy to flip this this time.
So not only do they operate a top-notch program for people that are pure music majors in performance or instruments, the teacher education component of, or music education is vital to our area, and they truly have more than a thirty-year track record of creating new teachers.
We have a lot of other elementary education teachers out there.
Oh, yeah.
So it just, friends of mine are, which is good.
Thank you. Wonderful job on both of these. Thank you. And we hosted two Easter-centric events this last month. One was our student leadership group created and did the Easter Kids Extravaganza, so they set up in the Tennant Center parking lot, and kids could go from car to car and have a little bit of an Easter adventure. It was very well subscribed, very busy, and they did a great job. That, in fact, is one of our students there portraying the Easter Bunny. I can say that because no kids are here, because otherwise, it's the Easter Bunny. And then the endowed trust created and hosted an event called the Chicks Only Extravaganza. We raised fifty-six-hundred dollars for scholarships for this event, got a lot of very positive feedback, definitely an event that we will repeat. And now I'm going to ask Gail to come back once again and talk about the University Center Open House.
Well, I wish you guys were here last week, because last Tuesday and Wednesday we had our University Center Open House, but it was a while late.
We could just have been.
And we've, we've realized that doing it two days a week helps us to get those Tuesday, Thursday students and Monday, Wednesday, Friday students, so we had, between the two days, we had eighty students come through, and part of our ticket to win on a gift card is a get stamp at each university, so that gives them the opportunity to meet each, each one of the advisors and see where their. So that gives them the opportunity to meet each one of the advisors and see where they're at and what university they are that we have here. So that was, it was good. We had gift cards for the students, we had gift cards for the faculty or staff that they could come up and they could do kind of the same thing, go around and meet everybody. And for the faculty that sent the most students to us, so that was, that was good. It just gets everybody involved, the faculty, staff, and, you know, students coming in. So it was great and it helps them know that we're there, what services we have and that we're, you know, there to help them on their journey for transferring for their next educational step.
Thank you. And to round out our event presentations, I'm going to ask Tashara Samuels to come forward and talk about Liberal Arts Week, which we're in the middle of.
Yes, thank you. I'm Tashara Samuel, English Associate Professor here at the college. This is our seventh annual Liberal Arts Week. We have four events this week that we're hosting over the course of the week, starting on Monday with our interdisciplinary lecture, which this week was held by Daniel Atwood, who presented Reimagining Medieval Music Today, Musicians in Skyrim, and Other Fantasy Games. And this event was to start off our week, which was based around video games. We had video games, interactive innovation as our theme for the week. And so everything had to do with video games. Our event yesterday was an employee lecture of Alex Jamison, supporting a view from Competitive League of Legends Circuit. Our event for today is an open house in our esports arena, which is going on right now as we speak. And then tomorrow night is our annual poetry slam, which will be over in classroom one oh eight in the evening. That's traditionally our largest event. We actually had thirty-seven students attend our event on Monday, which is our largest in several years. We had twenty-three there yesterday and I'm not sure about numbers because it's going on right now for the open house. But I know I had students this morning who were interested in going over, I think, the lure of video games and the opportunity to play around with them was definitely a selling point. But we were really interested in this year's events. Hopefully, having a shorter, more condensed schedule will interest more students and allow them the opportunity to learn a little bit about some things that they wouldn't have had a chance to explore otherwise. So are there any questions?
Where is the esports arena?
It is in Crisp one twelve. So I'm headed over there afterwards. You can, or welcome to join us and play with the video games. I know Call of Duty was under fierce debate from the seven members of the baseball team that are in my world literature class. They were arguing over who was going to get first dibs on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. And moving on to some upcoming events. So on April twenty-fourth, we will have our distinguished alumni reception, four thirty at the Tennant Fine Arts Center. Dr. Rob Webb is our distinguished alumni this year and will also be our commencement speaker. Then April twenty-fourth through May twelfth in the gallery in the Tennant Fine Arts Center will be the Fine Arts Student Expedition Exhibition. Retirement reception for all retirees will occur on April twenty-fifth from two to four. Mr. Steve Backwood, Miss Susan M. Davis, Miss Edie Philbeck, and Mr. Steve Lewis. Then on April twenty-seventh, we'll have our next blood drive for the American Red Cross from ten to two at the Best Activities Center Conference Room. And then on April twenty-eighth through the April thirtieth, three performances, two evenings at seven PM and an April thirtieth matinee at two. Free admission to the CRC Music Department's annual music, The Pajama Game. So I know that the music faculty, both the full-time and the adjuncts, as well as all of the students, spent a huge amount of time and effort into this, love to have a packed house for all three performances. And then on May first, our final patrons' event will be held. Solitary Man Tribute Show to Neil Diamond, that's May first, seven PM, and it is sponsored by the Dental Arts Group. Then on May fifth, we'll have our annual employee appreciation luncheon in the Best Activities Center. Spring Concert will be May ninth at seven PM at the Tennant Fine Arts Center. May twelfth is our Student Excellence Award Ceremony. May nineteenth is the RN Penning Ceremony. And then followed by commencement that evening. And that is what it's all about, is getting to that point and watching all of our successful students walk across the stage. Then May twenty-ninth will be closed for Memorial Day. And that sir is the president of the board. And we do have some executive session.
Thank you, Dr. Payne. I would entertain a motion to go into the executive session. Mr. Williams makes a motion. Dr. Hager seconds. It's a roll call vote, I do believe, if memory serves him right.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
By all means. We are in break session. Thank you all. All right, we're, we're, it's like I've never done this before. How about consideration and vote for the FY twenty-four for trustee meeting dates, which are presented to you in your board book?
I might emotionally accept those as our meeting dates as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Trustee.
No, I'm sorry, it's a roll call, excuse me, I can't read.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Sure. While we're talking, let's talk about holidays. Consideration vote of the FY twenty-four holiday schedule.
Is this the same pretty much as this year's?
Dates are changed to protect the...
We have been sent holidays.
No, they've been added.
Now they're adding more technical equipment.
I'm sorry?
Now they're adding more technical equipment.
I'd make a motion to second.
Mr. Pedersen makes a motion.
I'll second.
Dr. Hager seconds. Roll call.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Consideration and vote on the benefits for FY twenty-four.
It is pretty much the same it was the last time. There was a slight increase in benefits cost of college, but it was not outrageous. It was right at five percent. Not better than we anticipated it being. None of the plan options have changed.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second, Dr.?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Roll call, you.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Discussion vote on change to ITP eight-two-zero-one security data.
And eight-two-zero-four website privacy, given the associated regulations. On the first one, we simply changed the designated security officer to the network administrator from the chief technology officer. And then on the second one, we updated the website link locations and they were minor changes.
So you wanted to do a book of those as one book?
I believe they're...
They're split out of my...
Oh, well, that's still just one.
It's still just one. Is there a motion to approve the changes to IPT, ITP eight-two-zero-one and eight-two-zero-four policies? Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Dr. Hager, second. I appreciate that. Roll call.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yep. Last one. It's consideration and approval of all personnel actions and associated documents.
I'd make a motion to approve all personnel actions and associated documents.
I like that motion. Is there a second?
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes. Seeing nothing else.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Pedersen, Dr. Richardson, all in favor? Anyone opposed? We're adjourned, everybody with Dr. Richardson can leave. First day.